It looks like you're recording, right, Sarah?
No. Oh, I just got a message. And then we're on the second review.
Okay. It's 3:30. The clock looks to be slightly slow.
Well, I hear you.
Done. It's 3:30. And this is a meeting of the Land Use Review Board. I am Janet Hurley, the chair. Here we have Sarah Had, board member.
Brooke Dingle, board member.
Kirsten Botting.
Alex Weinhegen.
And we are meeting today to for the pre-application review, part of the pre-application review process of the Northwest Regional Planning Commission's draft Northwest Regional Plan. Each of the regional planning commissions in the state are making applications to the Land Use Review Board for approval of their reached plans. And the first step in that process is a pre-application to the board. We spent a few hours today driving around the region just to give the board a feel for the physical geography of the place. And this meeting here is to allow for the Regional Planning Commission to present its plan and for board members to ask questions and for anyone present to ask questions about the draft plan. I think we're going to start with some, well, the overview, then we're going to have some virtual site visits to complement our physical site visits. But I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over to Kirsten, who is the designated board member to conduct this pre-application review. So Kirsten, do you have anything you want to add before the commission presents its plan?
Well, did we ask if there's public comments or any agenda changes?
Oh, no, we didn't. It's not on our agenda.
Okay.
But we will have public participants can ask questions at the end. And maybe if there are questions or comments not about the plan, we can put that off until the very, very end. But yeah.
So, yeah, I would welcome, I think, Greta and Catherine and maybe any other planner from Emily, the, right, from the Northwest Regional Planning Commission to go over this in the middle. And I know you've prepared something to walk us through, so.
Some time for us to do that?
Yeah.
Well, you're getting prepared. There is a sign-in sheet for people who are here. We just need a record of people who are participating in the meeting. We'll have any people that are participating remotely automatically via the recording, but Chip there has the clipboard for the sign-in sheet.
All right. So thank you very much for having us. I'm Catherine Mitchell. I'm the executive director of Northwest Regional Planning Commission. With me is Greta Brunsberg, Senior Planner. I'm Lee Bach, Regional Planner. And Luke Slonda, Regional Planner. I'd also like to recognize two of our board members who are here. Bob Bierman from South Hero and Chip Sawyer from the City of St. Olmos. So we really appreciate the opportunity to give an overview of our regional plan.
It's a PDF.
Oh, it's a PDF. Oh, okay. All right. So I thought we would just take a minute to really orient you a little bit to the region itself.
So as you noted, we were out today talking about the physical sites, the physical region, what you see when you're out there, the buildings, the roads, the sidewalks. But I wanted to take a moment to talk about the people that live here. Between Franklin and Grand Isle County, we have about 60,000 people, just under 60,000 people. In terms of wages and the money that people make, we tend to be slightly below the state. So the average annual wage for the state of Vermont is $64,446. In Franklin County, the average wage is $62,487. And Grand Isle is a bit lower, $50,141. So there's a real disparity between the two regions based on annual wages. There's a host of factors that go into it, which I'm happy to talk about. But for now, let's just, we'll just do for the, for the place. And I just let you know that there are differences between the regions in terms of wages, in terms of size by the number of towns, and in terms of population. You can see that Franklin County has the majority of our, our 23 municipalities. And Grand Isle County has six of the municipalities. The other 17 are in Franklin County. In terms of employment numbers, the people who make those wages, there are just over 17,000 people in Franklin County that are actively part of the measurable labor market, people who get a W-2. And then in Grand Isle County, there's almost 1,400 people. So there's our, our wage and employment participation rate is about average for the state. So we don't have a lower or higher average participation rate in the labor market versus the other regions in the state. In terms of places where people live, the household change and the number of new homes that are available for people to live in really grows at a very different rate depending upon where you, where you are in our region. If you look at the chart on the right, you'll see that St. Albans City, Fairfax, Swanton, Georgia, the place, some of the places we visited today that are on the interstate corridor or have really established downtowns, like St. Albans City, have the higher growth rates for homes where people live. When you get further out into the region, like Richford and Vermont, our two most remote communities that we didn't visit today, those are really the slowest growth rates in our, in our region. So much of our growth, it does tend to be focused on the interstate corridor. So in terms of the plan itself, really, the focus of the regional plan is to have vibrant communities, a vibrant region where people can live and work and enjoy their, their lives, whether they're young or they're seniors and anywhere in between. We really divided our regional plan into three main areas focusing on economics, the social aspects of the region, and then the physical region. And the introduction is really where we do the regional profile, where we talk about equitable planning and where we have our implementation plan. So our regional plan has always had an equitable planning section, and that was expanded this year, which I'll talk about in a minute. In terms of the economic region, the plan talks about economic development, infrastructure to support that development and the energy that's needed to support the region. And then in the social region, we have the social infrastructure like libraries and schools, community health, which is not a required section of a regional plan, but it's one that we've had for a while and we think is very important to talk about in terms of the needs of the region. And then transportation, housing, natural and cultural resources, land use all go into the physical region. And then in our appendices, we have an enhanced energy plan as well as a more detailed description of our environmental benefits and burdens analysis. So in 2023, we did a very extensive update to our regional plan where we updated all of the sections except for land use and housing. And, no, we did just, so it's really just land use we didn't do. And then in 2024, we amended the plan to add the updated enhanced energy plan. So when we did this update to meet the requirements of Act 111, we really focused on a few key areas. The first is that we took our existing equitable planning section and we expanded that to talk more about environmental justice and the required change to examine the environmental benefits and burdens. And so that was expanded greatly since our 2023 plan. In the definitions, we adjusted our definition for substantial regional impact to reflect more the thresholds that the new Tier 1B establishes for housing. So previously, we would consider something a substantial regional impact in some of our communities with as few as 10 or 12 housing units. We adjusted that so that the Tier 1B substantial regional impacts are, are in line with the 50 housing units. And we then for St. Albans City and our other plant growth areas, we raised that threshold significantly. And then we, in our land use section, was where the most change happened, where we focused most of our public outreach was in the land use section and the housing section. In land use, we have, we revised all of our land use categories to meet the requirements of Act 181. And we also adjusted our goals and policies slightly. They remain the same in terms of their intent, but we did adjust them slightly to reflect the new land use categories and also to make some of them more specific in relation to some of their recent Supreme Court decisions. And then in the housing section, we did the updates to add in the housing targets. And Greta will talk about how we did that in a little bit. Finally, throughout the rest of the plan, we did do key data updates where we had new data, where there was new information, where things had changed from our 2023 plan. But we didn't do extensive updates throughout the remainder of the plan. And then we do have an implementation section. It's in the introduction. It talks about how we're implementing our regional plan. And there's some key ways we're doing that through governance and shared services, through our regional planning programs and projects like ground fields and some of our transportation planning and our emergency preparedness. We also work extensively with our municipal partners on local planning, project development, grant applications, and project management. And then we do development reviews for all projects that go through Act 250 or Section 248. We have a, we have a committee of our board that works with staff to do those reviews and offer comments to the regulators on those projects. Through our annual work program, we set priorities for projects and programs, and we make sure that our budget is in line with that to support the activities that we need to implement the regional plan. And then we really coordinate with many regional and state entities to actually get those projects and programs done. We do have within the plan itself a specific implementation table that lays out specific actions that we plan on doing in the next eight years to help implement this regional plan. And then finally, we do have a way that we measure our impact. So we will be doing an annual impact indicator report for the regional plan. In addition to that, and I have a quick example there on the slide, we do have on our website and indicators where you can go online and see data for all of the important areas that we care about and that we're measuring to see progress in our regional plan goals. And it's a really great tool, and I encourage you to look at it if you've never done so.
Hi, everyone. I'm Greta Brunsberg, Senior Planner. And I am going to talk about the two major focus areas for our draft regional plan. As Catherine noted, we did update the plan pretty substantially in 2023. So this plan update really focused on the key areas that we needed to bring it into performance with Act 181. So the first major focus area was our future land use mapping. And so I, some of the changes, well, actually, let me start first to say that in going out to do this map, we followed the methodology developed by BATA. And so the point of that was to ensure that across the, all of the regions in the state that we were consistently applying and interpreting the state statute for the criteria for each of the new future land use areas. So on the, on the screen here is our new draft future land use map. And I'll point out some of the differences between our existing map and what we ended up with. But it is all new land use areas in accordance with the new areas identified in Act 181. And you can see the majority of the land area is the teal color, the agricultural and forestry land use area. And so there was a shift between our rural areas from our current regional plan where we saw some of the forestry land that used to be in what we were mapping as conservation has now transitioned to the agricultural forestry land use area. So that did result in a little bit of a reduction in the size of our concentration because of how those areas are defined. And then we have village areas, or excuse me, new centers mapped across all of our municipalities. In our, our old plan, these were just point features. And so now we have new polygons for each center that are based on or designated village centers. And in many of those have expanded. And then we have, in many of the centers, most of the centers, there's new village areas, neighborhood areas that surround these centers. And then we have our industrial areas are now mapped as enterprise. And some of our lake-based recreation areas are mapped as resource-based recreation. So our biggest, we have one downtown in the region, and that is in St. Albans City where we are now. And then I will scroll to show you. So here, this slide shows generally the proportion of the different land use areas. As I noted, mostly rural agricultural and forestry at 64% of the region, rural conservation 25, rural general at 8. And then we have 2% in our, as our growth areas and centers, and 1% as the other land areas, transitional recreation and enterprise. Across the region, we have the one downtown center, as I was noting, and then 27 village centers, five planned growth areas, 20 village areas that surround centers, 10, 10 additional hamlets, point features, four transitional areas, four enterprise areas.
Do you have, you could tell me the next one?
Sure. So this slide shows all of our centers, village areas, and planned growth areas. And I incorporated in those are our 17 areas that are eligible for the Tier 1B Act 50 jurisdiction. So as, as everyone knows, one of the important changes around doing our land use mapping was the maps, the certain areas were eligible for Tier 1B Act 50 jurisdiction and also for state designations. But so this map shows the 12 communities that have opted in to Tier 1B so far for a total of 20 areas. Some towns have more than one area that is eligible. We have three with, and so those are, the, the red house indicates those, those municipalities that have opted in already. And then we have three that are still discussing and considering or just haven't taken action yet, and two have decided not to opt in at this time. So overall, the, the areas that make up these eligible areas, village areas, centers, planned growth areas that are eligible, or the ones that we anticipate will opt in, make up about 2% of the region that will likely opt in for Tier 1B. And so this represents a lift-like increase from the areas that are currently in the interim exemption. So the, the second focus of this plan update was also to address or tweak our housing, add to our housing chapter in the regional plan. Again, we had just done a pretty major update to the housing chapter in 2023. And so we were looking a lot of the issues around what the region can, understanding the housing crisis, data around that, and what we can do to address the shortage of housing and increase options for housing. But so for this update, we were really looking at incorporating municipal housing targets as required by the Act. And, so anyway, I'm going to explain a little bit of our methodology around how we did that. So they were based on the regional housing targets that were set by the state in collaboration with BATA. And so what, these targets were set for 2030 and 2050, and a low and a high end for each 2030 and 50. And so the low end was based on growth of population similar to 2020 to 23. And the upper end was, was meant to show what Vermont experiences in growth in households similar to the average of 1950 to 2020. And so, let's see. I guess, so, so for the high end for the 2050 housing target for our region, we're looking at 13,000 new homes in, in the region. And I guess, next slide, we're going to move now to our responsibility now in disaggregating that regional target to.
Greta, did you pick the high end? Is that what you just said?
I just, we didn't necessarily pick it. I just noted that the high end for 2050 was 13,000.
Okay. Okay, got it.
So. And so we, we disaggregated the target for both the 2030 high and low and the 2050 high and low, and we just presented a range.
Good.
And didn't like pick a number in between that range. We just picked, picked a range. Yeah. I guess. Right. So one of the things I was going to say, but prior, when I was talking about the 2050 versus the 2030 targets, actually, let me just move into the housing target methodology, sorry. So the way we approached our housing target methodology was to put 60% of the target towards our, in our planned growth areas, understanding that's where most of the growth should happen. That's where we're planning for most of our growth to happen. So we divided the regional target and put 60% of it towards our planned growth areas, and 40% of it went to all of the non-land growth areas. And so once we, and then we further divided that out based on, proportionally based on the existing number of housing units in each of those areas. So for the non-planned growth areas and for the planned growth areas. So it was proportional to existing housing units in those communities.
So, yeah, that's a quick question. So by planned growth area, you're not just referring to that one future land use designation, right? You're referring to village center, et cetera?
No. No, I was only referring to the planned growth areas.
The planned growth area, that's it.
So there are five of them, right? So we have, with St. Albans City, Innisburg, Fairfax.
So 60% in those five.
And you're not including the centers within them?
Correct. No, we are. The centers included.
Oh, okay.
That was my, that was my question. Yeah. Planned growth areas. Yeah. Thank you. And. And then, so that was how we did the 2050 target. And then for 2030, we just adjusted, understanding that it's not too, we wanted to make it a little bit more realistic. It's not too far away. So we, we adjusted that based on current growth rates for 2020 to 2024. So in addition to dividing it proportionally by existing units, we also factored into our recent growth rates. So that towns that were growing slower were, are going to receive a lower target than the towns that are growing faster. So municipal hard housing targets. Every single town shown up on, it's hard to read the slide. I apologize. Every single town is going to have to increase their, the amount of housing they're building to meet these targets. These targets are high. But they're a useful tool for communities to understand the housing that is needed for their communities and for a healthy economy, understanding that looking at that 2050 target, we understand that the, that the population is going to be growing by people moving into this region as opposed to natural increase. And so there's demand to move into our communities. There's jobs to move into our communities, but we're having, but we don't have the homes for. Next. I will now touch on outreach and engagement. So as part of this plan, we developed a public participation plan. It is, or a community engagement plan. It was based on our public participation policy at MRPC in addition to the goal of, or the requirement to have meaningful engagement by Vermont statute and Act 181. And so we, we divided our plan to direct engagement for two main stakeholders, regional residents and municipal officials. And our engagement is on a spectrum where we looked at informing and consulting with regional residents and having more deeper engagement with the municipal officials to develop our regional land use mapping and talk about and develop the housing targets. For regional, for our regional residents, we informed and consulted. We developed easily-to-understand and accessible flyers, websites, and social media, media, front work forum postings. And we also consulted with regional residents in places where people already are at. We are, were really focusing on ensuring equitable access to all, to folks that might not have traditionally been or able to participate in the process. And so we, we were holding open houses at grocery stores, community events, libraries, people where people are already at, intending to be very accessible. And we met with municipal planning commissions and select boards. We involved them and collaborated with them on the regional future land use mapping and housing targets, and then also empowered our select boards in their decision to opt in to Tier 1B. So in summary, some of the collaboration with select boards and planning commissions. We, this was an extensive outreach effort. We attended over 50 planning commission and select board meetings to collaborate on this mapping. It was a really rewarding experience to engage with communities in this way. And I think that there were, there was definitely collaboration on the resulting maps. One of the main, one of the, one of the many features that we consider in our mapping is some of the local planning and, and efforts that they have going on locally for their growth planning. And so that factored into, into the maps. And then in summary, the broad public outreach to ensure meaningful engagement of our regional residents, making sure that it's accessible and understandable, available in areas where people already are. We held public meetings. We had virtual webinars on, on the plan and easy-to-understand language. We conducted a survey, an online survey, and had 14 open houses. I call them mobile open houses around the region at areas or in stores or places where people already are. In addition to websites, front work forum postings, newsletters, online maps. And so through all of that effort, we definitely received a lot of feedback and had a lot of dialogue. There was a lot of messaging that we heard. We heard concerns around not enough infrastructure, whether certain housing growth rates would increase, whether that would change the character of community. A lot of folks were, you know, very excited and, and hopeful of the opportunities that would come through someone's designation or Act 250 incentives. There were some concerns around impacts, conservation. And so a lot of different, a lot of different feedback that we heard. And then finally, we're at our overall project schedule. I can turn it back to Catherine.
So the planners in the room know that this is a long process. So we have, we started the process in the fall, winter, fall, winter of 2024, and we've been working with.
And we've been working with our communities, working with our board and our regional plan committee to do this update of the regional plan. We completed the phase two, which was the future land use mapping and the collaboration with with our communities, uh, in the winter and spring of this year. And then we really did the final engagement, finalizing the maps and really finalizing the plan language this fall. And now we're in this phase where we've submitted it to you for your review. Our plan from here is to take the feedback that we get from the land use review board, the feedback we get from state agencies, and hold our first required public hearing in on December 17th. Um, our plan at that public hearing will be to use the same draft that you're reviewing as the base plan, but then also present the changes that we know we will be making in the next draft in response to your comments, as well as additional feedback we've gotten from communities even since that draft was submitted to the land use review board. So that is our plan to do just December 17th, first public hearing. Our board will review the draft and next draft plan at their January board meeting. And then we can adopt in February because there's not enough days to do our next notice, but we plan to have an adoption vote at the March board meeting, after which time we'll be submitting it to you for final review. So the adoption process itself is six months. Um, and it's, I think it's a challenging time for public engagement because you haven't stopped taking public feedback, but at the same time, your plan has to be close to the final version in order for the feedback from the land use review board to make sense. So it's a challenging time to be talking about a plan in that six month period because you don't want to stop the public feedback and still want more, but will be having to be really thoughtful about how incorporated. So that's it in much. I'm happy to have questions or additional comments or anything you want to add. Um, I, did you, um, municipalize the housing targets by housing type as well? Or did you just municipalize by reach?
We, yes, actually, we generally divided them based on, uh, type and region as whole, but we didn't do it.
Okay.
It's because generally it's.
The numbers are too small.
Yeah. It's small and it's generally very similar.
Okay. I don't understand how you would do that. It's just straight up based on units. So how? I. I did it for the Glennington region.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I I just sort of looked at the proportions of that type of housing in each town and sort of.
We did that.
Mimic it with some with some increases where it looked like there was, um, capacity. We did it on a regional level with the understanding and explanation that that same mix would be anticipated. And we also, as part of the 2023 plan, did an extensive housing needs analysis. And so that really gave us a better indication of the types of units that we need. Um, for example, um, 60% of our housing growth was single person homes, but 70% of our new homes were single family houses. So there was a bit of a mismatch. Yeah.
Yes. And that was generally how true across all of our municipalities.
So can I ask another sort of clarifying question about that? So if there was a municipality that had a higher rate of certain multifamily type, multi-unit type, does that mean that that particular municipality got a higher assignment? Or does it just mean that fitting that their unit allocation in?
It's allocate by type for each municipality. We allocated by type for the region.
That's okay. Okay. And then noted that that would be for the whole.
The overall amount of how the units that a town or municipality has was a factor in the target they got, but not by.
Okay. It looks like Sarah has a question.
I have a question. I'm not sure if it's, it might be better for the virtual site visit coming up, so feel free to pump that. Um, in looking at future land use map area, there are some smaller villages throughout, um, the area that are almost hamlet size. And so I was wondering if you could speak to some of the process in terms of determining village versus hamlet for some of the smaller areas.
Uh, in some cases, it depended on whether there was an existing that existing designated village center, obviously. If an existing designated village center existed, we mapped it as a village center as opposed to a hamlet. Um, in other cases, it was, uh, local planning and, uh, whether that whether that area was being planned locally as a center, uh, meeting that criteria of, um, sort of center of the community commerce through traditional center. And, um, I don't know, without speaking in specifics, to elaborate beyond that.
Because of the virtual site visit.
There's, there's one in particular you might be thinking of, um, I don't know, but there was one that we originally mapped as a hamlet that the town requested be a center because it does have an existing historic district on the national register. So they thought it deserved the elevation.
Yeah.
And it is time for our virtual site visit and Josh is gonna lead us through that. Um, he's gonna be our pilot.
Sarah, first one. I have to.
More weight than fun.
I think you might be able to. Try and share and then see.
Control, but the share button. Only being organized with the president's share. Which means you.
I don't know how I do that. How would I do that? Do you know how to?
To allow anybody to share?
Think you go to the people, the people list and you click on Josh and make him a presenter.
Make presenter.
Okay.
We'll try sharing and then we'll see.
Share motion is.
So for those who don't know, Josh, he's the district six and nine coordinator who administers application review for those two, um, district regions of act 250. And I worked with Josh in, um, you know, deciding a route for the virtual site visit to supplement what has already occurred in the form of some field site visits. Um, we have a sort of route that Josh is gonna uh, take us through. And if there's time, so it's, it's, it's locations that were not included in the field site visit. And if there's time, we we will also be stopping at, you know, some of the locations where we did do a field site visit. So we're gonna see how far we get with with our schedules.
Indeed. Thank you, Kirsten, for the introduction again.
Thanks, Josh.
Josh, I was Ian. I think most of you are at the point of the day who I am. Uh, did not. I am district six four here, as we all know, that encompasses Franklin and Grand Isle counties. Um, and I will sprinkle in some fun facts, just a small handful of fun facts in the end of the way. Uh, we've got 23 stops in about 45 minutes, so we're very moving pretty swiftly. And I invite, um, Catherine and Greta to uh, step in with their expertise and knowledge on the rock. Um. So off we go. And starting in Georgia, I've been doing kind of a clockwise loop to do before I'm calling my head. Um, so first stop is Georgia Center, uh, or um, yeah, first second. So we began our day, second stop of our day in person was the Georgia Court, um, which is available for a virtual visit as well, if you'd like. Um, stop one is Georgia Center. And so we have Plains Road here heading off to the west towards Lake Champlain. Um, and I'm going to where I can draw the, um, Google Street person, just to give you on the ground look. So this is looking north on Long and Seven.
Josh, can you see the date of the Google imagery?
I can. This says October 2020.
Twenty-two. That's the municipal office right ahead on the left. You can see the sign where the sign is.
Got it.
I, oh, there's.
All right. Ah, we're good. So now.
I tried to do games, forgot what we did can do. So.
Yeah.
Right. So here's Plains. I'm just, yeah, doing a three sixty. Here's Plains Road heading to the west. Um. It does.
Municipal office is up that way.
And the elementary school is up there, so I will exit street view just to give it, go back to the aerial. So town office is right here. Or I think.
Fire station. There's the town office right there.
Green roof. And then a little bit farther north, we have the elementary school. Um, middle school and no. So that is, I would say, three, four miles north of where we were, the Georgia Court or Village Court, um, area today. So first fun fact of the day, the tallest, highest point of elevation along, um, all the major planes in Georgia, uh, Echolab. Better be.
And there's road to place, which is a map as a hamlet. And that just came earlier on site visit, so I'm just pointing that out.
Yep. And so Plains Road has from Georgia Center down.
Do it in a chance.
For you. Thanks.
Did you get Jennifer?
Hang on, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, next stop, South Hero. So we were also in South Hero, um, on stop one, a South Hero Village area. So this is the Keeler Bay area of South Hero. So here they village, um, I dropped the pin here, um, but I think this area up here, if I'm mistaken, is also considered, is that a village area of Killer Bay?
No.
No, it's your lower right.
You were just there.
Your, your pin was on.
South Hero Killer Bay Village is where your pin is. Yeah, it's, it's very small. There's a church. There's a store. There's a few. There's a gas station. There's, um, a restaurant.
Yeah.
It's a pre-existing.
It is a pre-existing village.
Small village area. I briefly confused myself with Grand Isle Station. Um, so we up here, we have Route Two. We're facing south right here. Um, this is McKees' Pub. Uh, gas station. There's an arts and crafts store up here on.
And then it does go south along Route Two. Um.
Yeah, that's the, that's the northern end of.
Um, and there's, there's a church, um, and, uh, another variety store, general store.
On this stuff and.
Towards the south.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that a private business that you just?
Uh, right here.
Yeah, that's an auto garage.
So looking, this is, folks that don't know, this is it. Looking, heading west towards the lake. This is how you.
Towards the parody.
Together. Yeah, together, area, but. Um, okay, next stop, we're heading to Grand Isle. We'll do the village first.
Uh, wow. Yeah.
So here's the main intersection of Grand Isle Village. Just do a quick aerial tour. This is Emin's Market, for those that are familiar. Here is a church. This is the location of the Grand Isle Summer Farmers Market from May to October. Um, a little bit farther south here. Um, this right here is the northern terminus of East Shore Road South. Um, and then this right here in the village is the southern terminus of East Shore Road North. Um, so two long, they both connect at their, you know, northern and southern termini. That's the word, um, with Route Two.
Can you go on High Road there a little?
Residential along the way. Uh, sure. Okay, this is the prompt. This is the future location of the Grand Isle, um, public library. Uh, current location is right here across the street, I believe.
Uh, right across the street.
Right, right there. Okay.
Is it one of the Carnegie era libraries and it's moving to the modern?
It is old and small, so very historic. Yeah, what's, what's gonna be?
So, current library, correction, that's the library.
That, okay, well, so no, just the little stick built thing. Okay.
So this was, we'll see how this. Front town office.
And then they have a new fire, which you can't see.
Yeah, new fire station. And this is the location where it's cleared here.
And they are currently, um, relocating the the library to that property next to the, where the existing town office is and are also looking to plan for a town green and sort of a town center type development. And there'll be like a sidewalk that they're planning right now from the town office to the library.
And am I right in seeing that the image is newer? My eyes are a little.
Uh, this is, it sounds August 25th. So, yeah, right there.
So you can see the new fire station next from above.
So we're oriented to north now, so fire station. We're.
I think that's a CHT housing.
It is.
Next to the.
So.
Champlain Housing Trust.
What's worth this, the housing trust and the development in the town hall or the new town library are all under act 250 jurisdiction, which would go in a way in part under Tier. Um, jumping to Grand Isle Station, this is what I was thinking where it's a hero. Um. Not much going on here, so I would.
Thank you.
Prefer to Catherine and Greta.
So the center here is a little bit inland and then there's village area surrounded, surrounding it. They have a municipally owned building called the Annex and there's a child care center there. And there's, um, a lot of soils available for and some housing development already happening. And so locally, they are looking to have that planned around sort of the center being the, um, the Annex and, um.
Um, is, is it an existing?
It's not an existing. It would be new.
It, okay. And is it zoned for a mix of uses?
Yeah.
Okay. Next stop, heading north through the islands will be North Hero Village.
Anybody getting seasick?
I was gonna give a warning. So, yeah, turn away during the, during the transitions.
During the flight.
North Hero. Um, this is the North Hero House, um, in, and this is their summer restaurant, sticking out into this, uh, little pier slash residence. Um, North Hero, uh, Hero's Welcome Store. And they have a little, um, picnic table area and, uh, dock up there. Uh, summer sports, um, business back here in the back of the parking lot. Um.
The courthouse.
You're sure of the courthouse.
There is a courthouse.
Yeah. Okay, um.
Yeah, you got our Grand Isle, Grand Isle County expert here in the back.
So, and yet here's a little, so this used to be in Albert. Um, it's Kramer and King. The ridge moved back into the village. Um, from about 15 minutes, 20 minutes, started developing Albert. Um. Savage Gardens Farm up here. Oops, that might be familiar. And I'll bring us into the village here too.
It's an existing designated village center, but this is one of our designated centers that doesn't have a village area around it. And that was really because they weren't locally planning for higher density housing at all around their village center.
So here's courthouse. Uh, Hero's Welcome Store. I mean, you see the, I'm doing a nice house. Looking south.
Vincenies?
What's that?
Are there vincenies?
Decent.
Really, really good sandwiches.
Yeah, sandwiches are fantastic.
Thomas Jefferson.
So this is looking south on Route Two. This house on the left here, we'll see if we can get a. Fantastic. They have a fox. It looks like it's, uh, going to the bathroom in the yard, which apparently is goose, uh, geese dirt. Which is too old. Moving along. Heading to the Highgate Center, that's the.
Close your eyes, Emily.
On our clockwise tour, the next stop would be Swanton, where we were there first. So we're gonna go through Swanton, skip through Swanton and go to Highgate Center. I've got your eyes. Um, and I'm gonna back out just a bit, just to, cause I made a note of it earlier. So here's where we were, where our Swanton site is, right here, after parking lot. We, we took, turned right off the highway at that exit, here's Mississippi Valley Union High School, looks like a spaceship, kinda cool. Um, Franklin County State Airport's here. Um, which is cute for next, uh, fun fact, in nineteen ninety-four and nineteen ninety-five, uh, the Grateful Dead performed. At Franklin County State Airport, we made people, people attendants, and as far as I know, I believe those are two biggest galleries of humans in the state of Monastery. And.
Is that in your, is that in your plan?
Yeah, you clipped through, yeah.
That's, yeah.
Was the first.
Okay, so Highgate Center, there was the drop. Us here, so this is. The connector to Highgate Falls, which we'll get to next, and they're, they're very close in proximity. Um, this is kind of the main intersection in town right here. Uh, we're looking north.
So Highgate Center has, uh, an exist, is obviously an existing designated village center, but the existing designated village center is, is also a designated neighborhood. Um, it's the only designated, existing, pre-existing designated neighborhood we have, but the boundaries obviously are different in the proposed plan where the. Proposed plan, um, the designated center is very similar in size, but the village area and proposed neighborhood expands further around.
I believe this is where it occurs, where I believe that's the library, if I'm not mistaken. Um, so I'm gonna head back out to aerial view. And this is gonna perhaps trigger our statewide coordinator. Aaron Brodick with attendance. Right here, in the grassy portion is where. The future wastewater treatment facility for Highgate, uh, available is for most. Um, and which has a rich history, we'll say, with Act Two Fifty.
The Homer's Inn said that's graded there.
Yeah, yeah, same, not, not the New Purple's. So Highgate Falls, we can scare you of the flash. Um.
You were the point, yeah, the, the Lemoilla Valley does traverse the village, it's.
This is Highgate Falls, here's the Highgate Falls, Village Green. Um, this is looking south. This is looking north, and you'd go down around the corner, past the falls of South, and then back up the hill into Highgate Center. And here is the next. Fun fact, anecdote. Today. This is allegedly the most haunted building in the Highgate area. If you're interested as to why it might be so haunted, I encourage you to look it up.
Okay.
There's a spot you see in the basement.
Um, other than the inn or, I presume this functions as an inn?
Yes.
Are there other?
Yes.
You're anticipating my question?
Yes, if you, you're almost on top of it, Saint John's, um, church.
Okay.
Which is on the other side of the green. Go a little bit to the south. A little bit to the south, a little bit to the south, it's where the green terminates up, it's hidden in the tree cover, right by the cemetery.
Got it.
Is there?
Yeah, that's the church at the end of the green.
And it's a pre-existing designated center.
Okay, great.
Not enough, it's, be it behind the trees.
And then you're proposing village area, sort of.
A small village area.
On the south end of it and, oh, yeah, got it.
There it is, you can't see the breakthrough though.
Yeah.
Shadows right there. Okay, next stop is Highgate Falls. Okay, the closest town to our land port of entry, um, heading into Canada.
Didn't we just stop at Highgate Falls?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Springs.
Oh, okay, Highgate Springs, good.
Highgate Springs is an existing designated village center, we're not proposing a village area there. Um, there's not a whole lot of opportunity or local planning for neighborhoods around this area. It is near, um, an area that we mapped as resource-based recreation, which includes the Tyler Family Resort and some adjacent shoreline development.
So orienting to our right is heading north towards the border. To our south is heading, to our left is heading south towards Swanton. Um, let's see, next stop, Sheldon Springs and Sheldon Creek.
Thanks Sarah for that. Translation.
Apologize, for the record. Um, Sheldon Springs, so this is. Uh. Kind of, I would say halfway between St. Albans Town and Euston, accurate description there. Um, the main route. Uh, this is Sheldon Elementary School here, cross like structure. Um, this is one, you know, the main intersection here is. Presidential.
So again, a pre-existing center, they do have, um, they are doing, uh, some work to make the area more pedestrians acceptable. Um, they have a scoping study right now where they're looking at, um, sidewalks, uh, in this, in this intersection area and connecting the elementary school. Um, and then in addition, in addition, there's, uh, Mississippi Valley Rail Trail that connects, um. This area, there's like a triangle between Mill Street, Route One Five and the rail trail, so it adds some additional pedestrian connectivity. And it does have municipal, um, water and wastewater, um, but it is just a village area that.
And this is. Just a little bit farther north.
And the, just for reference, because it's a small village, um, to have that type of infrastructure, it's from the historic mill that was there and then the municipality bought it.
And so, so they have both, does it have capacity?
It does, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, this looks like an ambulance.
Still leaning on.
Um, and then. You can see, begin to see the fence here and the crosswalks, uh, this is the. Moving north towards the entrance of the elementary school, but it's moving pretty slowly here, so we'll head south, um, from. The Springs to the Creek. Which I find is the quaint little village. Rock right here in the village.
That map is quite different from here.
So, looking south.
There's the town office.
Where? On the south?
Uh, that's a lot.
Town Office.
So that's sort of the.
That's the white building, grateful for it. Part of the words are parts in front of it.
The town office and the library.
Yeah, and then Bridge Street, which, um, goes north, um, sort of, if you would have turned to the left, Bridge Street would be right there, and that's sort of like the main, other than the street is, um, um, now.
See here.
Bridge Street goes over the Creek.
Bridge Creek, and there's, uh. Where's the, where's the church?
The White House, yes. Cause they just sit there, it's right near the intersection of Mississippi Valley and the Lemoilla Valley Rail Trail.
I'm not sure which building there is, there is, there's a, I believe, a historic church, we read on this.
There is a, it, um, at the, across the river there is a, um, it's like owned by the town but operated by the historical society as museum.
Okay.
Across the street from Royal Purchase. Um, and that's, it's a historic storefront, um, across the street from Royal Purchase.
Okay.
Yeah, that one, um, and that actually used to be, um, there was a block there that, that burned, it, it was more developed at one point. Um, but, so this is, it doesn't, existing designated village center with some village area around it, we are actually looking to potentially expand a few areas of the village area. In our next draft, so different from what the draft you have just.
But this one doesn't have water sewer.
It does.
Oh, it does.
Yeah, sorry.
Water, water.
Just, oh, just water, okay, it's water. Got it, so a lot of infrastructure for that, for a community that size.
Yeah.
So. Just water and then soils, and there's a great park.
Yeah, I can make this a little wider on the, the folks, it's a little breezy, so heading north, next stop Franklin Village. So this is one of the main intersections in town, um. You likely know that Franklin is the, is where Lake Carmine is, so Lake Carmine State Park is down here, right here, um. Probably about a train and a drive from the village area, maybe a little bit less. This area right here is the Franklin Homestead, which is, um, senior, I was in a benefit, which is under existing active fifty jurisdiction. So they would stay in the benefit from Tier One B, and I will just drop, hand it right here. Downtown Franklin.
So, and similar existing designated village center, um, neighborhood or village area, close neighborhoods surrounding it. Um, they have municipal water, no wastewater.
So, we possibly are just, apartment right there. Town Hall.
Town Hall is some library, yeah.
Okay, we are gonna head east to Berkshire. We have three stops in Berkshire, Berkshire West, Central and East.
But all three are existing designated village centers.
Berkshire Center is not an equal.
Thank you.
Yeah, please do, but it is, uh, has me as they plan.
Right, it's where the town office is.
Yes, and.
That's where I was.
Uh, little. I can tell you why, and it was because when we, their town plan was done, they forgot to list it in the implementation actions, so when they went to do their village center designation application, it wasn't eligible. So it was intended to be, uh, applied for a village center designation, couldn't because of that issue.
So you can skip to the set, or pure setting?
No, we're, yes. We're, now, I'm, I'm saying in the past, why I didn't get the, uh, old designation program like West and you search here.
Oh. Gotcha, thank you for declaring a case.
Yes, sorry.
So Berkshire West here, just main intersection. The route into. Canada. You've got your port of entries, they're looking south now. Any highlights here?
Uh, if you keep going, keep going, uh, that yellow house was a restaurant, yeah, that's the main, which would use.
A really good one.
Which one?
Uh, keep, keep, keep going.
Keep turning.
Keep going.
We'll get there, this one.
There you go, that one, yeah, right there.
Okay.
What's the restaurant?
Seventy Ninety Six House.
No, no, it's boring.
Food South, take that.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you see on the screen?
Is it also lodging or?
No, I think it's just restaurant.
Really sure?
It is just restaurant, it's not an inn.
It's not an inn, yeah.
And it has, it could be housing too, like an apartment.
Yeah.
So we'll just follow the road to Berkshire, West Berkshire.
And there's a church back there as well, on the sort of cross that street there.
Um, so just heading in a southeast direction out of West Berkshire, we're gonna find our way into.
Berkshire Center.
Berkshire Center. Here we are.
And the little circle drive is the town office.
So.
And then the elementary school.
So this is the town office?
Yep.
Right there.
No, I have to see the circle drive.
Yeah.
Yeah. There, yeah.
The, uh, the street view doesn't exist in this part of Berkshire Center.
Yep.
Um, but we can drop down to the elementary school here.
Yeah, this is the village area with the, goes up to the elementary school.
Yeah.
The street view doesn't work for the Berkshire Center.
No.
Yeah.
Cause you forget, they forget to. You know, mark it as a center, Google, Google must have been paying attention.
Yes.
So this is. The road, uh, back to West Berkshire. Um, and this is gonna take us, I believe, ever on the road towards Eustonshire and back to Eustonshire.
Yeah.
Um, and here is the.
Yep. Yeah, this is the village area, right? Um, and they did just put in for municipal planning grant application to study looking at adding a path between the town office and elementary school. So, are there planning there? Right, so the village area essentially exists between the elementary school and the town office.
Sorry, reorienting here, so. Again, elementary school here, white roof, ball fields, downtown office.
State Recreation, so ladies associated with the elementary school, it's used not to buy the school, but also the videos.
Other than the town office largely residential, but there is one sort of building that is, um, that has had commercial, and I think it goes in and out across the street from the town office.
So, um, I'm looking at the map and there's some funny colored, well, I guess, so. There's, um, an exclusion, that we're talking about East Berkshire, right?
Uh, we're still commercial center.
Oh, we are, oh, okay, go ahead, sorry.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm the next one.
We excluded the, the flood plain there.
Yeah, if you're wondering why it's so strange in East Berkshire without the by the flood plain, yeah. And that also. Well, when we get there, when we get there, um.
We're here, let's go there.
Let's go there.
East Berkshire.
So, the bridge looks like it's pink, the road looks like it's.
Yes, that's where the existing center is designated, it's basically like a dumbo where, because with the old program, it needed to be attached to be one.
Right.
So that's the existing destination, it is strength to the road, through the flood plain, that, that's a farm field, there's a development there, so there's. Uh, and then it expands out on the other side of the foot lane back towards.
Right, so what I'm asking about is the map, showing the, the transportation linkage there as partially in purple and partially in pink.
Oh, okay, so maybe that.
Sorry.
We can't see it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Those should be all, those, that's what they needed.
It's like the bridge is not.
Yeah, the bridge is standing to have a.
Oh, okay, I see, that's just a mapping, that's a mapping error, yeah.
So, is it all the purple?
Yeah.
Yeah. And so, for the folks, um, skiers amongst us, this intersection here, if you were heading in a northerly direction towards Richford, you take a right here, that would take you into Montgomery Center, and that's how you would get to G P. Um, but we're gonna keep, we're not gonna go G P, we're gonna go to Richford. And this is the last fun fact, I believe, that I have for you. Uh, one of, if not the most famous Olympian from Vermont is from the town of Richford, Ellie Curry or Saint Pierre. And her husband is part of the Saint Pierre family, which I believe is the biggest farm family.
She went to Richford High School, but she's from.
Oh, she's from. Thank you for, um, but Saint Pierre family, big, big farm family, they have, they own thousands of acres in the region, um. So here we are, Richford Village. Um, right here is the Richford Land Port Entry, just a couple miles north of downtown. Um, I dropped the pin right on the bridge intersection here.
So, Richford has municipal infrastructure, um, watering sewer. Maped as a center and a place growth area. Existing designated center. Um. What else to say?
Actually, I'm looking at this, so. The river isn't mapped.
Isn't mapped, right.
Right, it's just a glitch in the map.
Yeah, so that's.
Another glitch.
A glitch there too, and that's why the bridge, and probably that other bridge wasn't pink, it was just not mapped. Probably, so, yeah.
So maybe while we're on the topic of sort of like mapping, itchy questions, I have a, a general map question that maybe kind of dovetails with this, like what? So a lot of the roads are mapped, I think at this rural general, I just didn't really understand why that would be the case, like it might.
Yeah, so we, we did our mapping.
Yeah, so we, we did our mapping based on parcel lines, and I think that's just.
Oh, yeah, it captures the whole.
Because that's the first right of way.
Yeah.
It's mapped as one particular parcel, so, um, that's just how it works.
Kind of like, how is, yeah, we're not really thinking of the roads as rural general.
Yeah.
It's just.
I think, like, if you zoom in enough that you can see that, that's how it'll show that. But like, on regional scale, we're not really intentionally.
So I think we might wonder.
Much differently than Rutland.
We stopped the parcel lines a lot more.
Yeah.
Which allows moving.
But I wonder if you have those, um, those road segments, because you use parcel and that go, it goes through rural conservation on both sides for, you know, a mile. Can you just turn it green instead of yellow?
Yeah, that would be a fine tuning, that would be a feel.
Yeah.
But, but again, uh, not to, this is their, their pre-application, but Rutland is way more of that. Every single road in Rutland, county future range is mapped, is rural general.
Right.
All of them. They've, they've done a much different job of, of making a more cohesive, uh, set of land use areas.
I think it's, it's the challenge of making a map that is allowed and accessible to be viewed at this level. When, out of, you know, yeah, typically we're thinking of it at like our regional scale and it's.
Zooming in too close.
But noted like that's definitely not, like the intention is not to have.
It's, thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah. Okay, long stretch here, a few more stops. Um, Euniceburg Falls.
It was a part of a landfill area.
Self-explanatory here is, um, before I drop a pin, or drop the street view, let's see.
I'll say.
Here's the high school down here. Um, just a side, side street off of, of Main Street downtown. Um, and our pin is straight across the town green.
In fact, wanted, there it is.
Yeah. Very capital of the world.
Yes.
Right.
We dropped right about where they dropped the cow popping.
So they, they marched cows through, they.
They, yeah, they helped.
Presumably municipal water and sewer.
Yes, municipal water and sewer.
And electric.
Yeah, that's true. That's interesting.
How about that?
How's it, how's it stored?
A comment, they have a hydro dam, and, oh, okay.
Here's, here's, we're right here. Um, just, just load this, uh.
The bridge stuff down.
Flower, raised a flower.
Bridge parks.
Pretty nice waterfall, maybe if you check it out.
So they have existing designated, no center or no neighborhood, so this will add a new neighborhood hopefully, um, in the, the Frank Grove area surrounds the center.
Okay, let's see the falls, but there's.
Oh, let's talk about. Is that a community garden or?
It's a bridge of flowers and leaves.
Oh, oh, I get you. And that was actually, um, created by one of our honorable chairs on his wife.
Yeah.
We will, on this, this views. Okay, straight south out of Euniceburg.
Before you leave that, all of Euniceburg Falls, so just note that Mississippi Valley rail trail travels right through the middle. Of the, of the downtown Euniceburg Falls.
Let's see.
Wondering.
Um, well, I know where it is because of.
If you look deep out street, right?
That's two fifty.
The, the.
So the rail trail comes right through here.
It goes behind there, yep.
The other way.
So this is a big active fifty development. Here is, uh, traffic supply, uh, Hannaford, McDonald's, and so forth.
Yep.
Um, so here's a rail, rail trail that cuts behind that.
Yeah.
It's almost done, right? Or is, is that?
The recirc.
The surfing thing, yeah.
Yeah.
It's been built for a long time.
Yeah, um, okay. Feel like I might be getting on schedule, so we're just gonna, I said, head south to Vegas Fields. It's like I might not be the only one in the room that gets their Christmas trees from, for those that celebrates, from Larry's Tree Farm. Which is right here. And then there's a dualing tree, Christmas tree farm right here. Very fun festive season out there. So here's Baker's Field, um, I'm gonna drop actually a little farther north than that, because this is, it's like a leave. Town green and, uh, offices here.
Uh, that's the library, the town offices.
Of that.
There's the old academy.
Yeah, there's, yeah, we've got the whole academy building. And the school's behind there, and then you have to kind of, yeah, backface to go back to the town office.
It's like to me, a storied building there.
And then the town, some of those, and, sidewalks.
Sidewalks, and here's the, we'll scroll farther up the street here. Very slowly. So this is the intersection, where you can see the, if I can get a little closer. This is the intersection with Route thirty six, uh, which is the mini route from St. Albans to Baker's Field. So you would take a right at this intersection to head back to St. Albans. Um, next stop, Fletcher. And I'm not even sure I've ever been to the town of Fletcher, so I'm gonna defer to the RPC folks.
So Fletcher is the only community in the region that doesn't have a state ground. Except for a tiny bit, if that's like one corner kind of kisses the, the concrete of Fletcher.
So that might be why.
The Royal Valley of.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, so there's two proposed centers in Fletcher. Fletcher Center is, uh, where the town office used to be. And there's some, several historic columns. There's Grange Hall that is site of the world famous, uh, Grange Hall sales that happen a few times a year. Highly recommended if you like the, that sort of thing. And it is also a utilized community facility as well. And it, it has an existing, this Fletcher Center is listed on the national register, so it has an existing historic district here, which is why it's mapped as a center and not just as a hamlet. And then the next place in Fletcher is Binghamville. Uh, it is, it's called Binghamville, but it's not a formal village, but that's its, that's its informal village name. That is where the current town office is. Um, there's a church there and the school is just now the room.
And then that one is being proposed with a village area.
It is.
Yeah.
Also a village area.
But the school's not in the village center?
It's not in the village center, it's, it's in the village area. Yeah, it's in the, it's in the village area. It should be in the village area. And there's a, uh, Fletcher Johnson, it's right there. And this is an area that the town has planned for, on a Fletcher scale, higher density residential, rather than the remainder of the community.
Does it have waters?
Not nothing.
But it does have some decent soils.
Yeah.
Okay, next stop, we're heading back to Fairfax, to the South Village area, um, which we did not visit in person earlier. To this point here, give you the view. So everything kind of, you're looking at.
Right, so that area is mapped as center right where you are. If you, you know, where we want to. Go to the hardware, park at the hardware store, man?
Yeah.
There you go, that way.
Want to drop down here?
Yeah.
Yeah, right, uh, okay.
All right, I'm the baseball diamond, it'll get you in the middle of it.
Right.
I'm kind of the books office now, so.
So, yeah, so there's, um, a variety of, of commercial establishments, a post office, um, a little league field, um. And, and so that, you're going towards the hardware store now. This is the intersection of, uh, Route one oh four and Route one twenty eight, which is a problematic intersection. There's, um, some studies underway to make improvements to that intersection. Um, and they also, so the, the municipality is planning for, uh, mixed-use development, um, at smart growth development, converting this area, making it more pedestrian accessible. They have an official map. And, um, also planning for residential development in a higher density, um, than, than surrounding areas in the town.
Yeah.
That's incorporated into their, their planning, their zoning.
Um, and so just to orient folks that were with us for our first like visit in person earlier, uh, we were let's see here.
Just northwest.
Just like that, is the town hall right here, right here.
Yeah.
Um, and then this is Hunt Street right here, this diagonal, which takes you down to BFA Fairfax High School.
So there's eight through twelve.
Yeah, eight through twelve. There's municipals that were in water and the historic, in the, um, village center that you're at right now. And there's just adequate soils right now in the South Village.
Okay, and it's also working on all of this high school fields, um, development here in that is open fields, all under, existing after the jurisdiction.
Josh, how many more stops do we have?
Uh, Fairfield and St. Albans Town, which is Franklin Park West, which we don't really need to do a field.
Let's do Fairfield. Um.
We started in St. Albans Town.
Uh.
No, you saw it in the bay. St. Albans Town has planned growth area that, um, that is attached to the St. Albans City.
Right.
Growth area.
Right.
Yeah, I'd like to look at that one if we could.
Okay.
So Fairfield.
Do you guys get Fairfield?
I'll be.
Or, or just go over five minutes.
Sure, it has two designated centers.
Okay.
And two village areas and.
Let's do all three, Josh.
Okay. Fairfield, um.
They have recently decided not to opt in the Tier 1B right at this time. East Fairfield is also along the Royal Valley of.
Fairfield, East Fairfield's.
Our map here, you can see the rail trail really well. But, you know, following the river.
Fairfield Center has, uh, the, the school, the town office, um, uh, event, like wedding venue.
Nice breakfast place.
A breakfast place.
That may or may not be good.
Um, it's kind of a, a, a gas station, but it is sort of the general's, like, convenience store. Um, and then there's this that it's a second sort of co-working event space, um, right there, the bricks building there.
And there are schools co-blanketed over by the.
Across the street.
By, by the library.
And the library is all there.
It'll be up a hill, I believe, and.
Right there.
That's the school, yeah.
Night yell is coming.
So if you were taking this road that we're looking at right here, that takes you, um, into St. Albans Town, down to BFA St. Albans. And the Pearly, um, actually, I'll be based in the Pearly Collins Sports Complex would be, that road takes you. Um.
They did put a nice, uh, just like kind of a sacred, sacred school sidewalk project in connecting the library, um, making use of like the old route. Um, the old road that sort of dips down, um, instead of building it in a challenging location on the right way, and then connecting it to the general, to the gas station, sort of convenience store.
So that's high school, um, for the history, those among us. Here is Chester Archer Road right here, which takes you to the Chester Archer, um, presidential, Homestead. Yeah, if it's interested. Okay, last stop, um, Franklin Park West, a place I know very well through Actu fifty. Um, let's see here, St. Albans Town. So this, when you came through here on the highway, this is, uh, our District Six Chair, Dan Leno, this is his car dealership, um, Andy.
That actually, across that side is mapped as transitional, not as land growth area.
Um, so this whole area here, this is right here, Highgate Commons, um, you know, commercial shopping center, Walmart. Active fifty jurisdiction, that's active fifty, this is, um, Market Thirty Two, under Actu fifty. And this is the main entrance to Franklin Park West. We issued a permit for Starbucks, um, on this northern portion of this triangle parcel right here, earlier this year. Um, so all Franklin Park West is under Actu fifty jurisdiction. Um, here is, is not senior, but fifty five plus.
Fifty five plus, no.
Um.
That's the rail trail that we're starting right now.
Yep, so here's the parking area for rail trail. Um, so all of this Franklin Park West under Actu fifty jurisdiction, bring a full circle, when we were standing on the front porch. And we pointed out, uh, Chip pointed out the, the top of the hill.
And Josh, before you move, can, can you go back to the, the Walmart, um, location? So as you can see right now, if you zoom back up, if you zoom back out a little bit, if you look at our plan, if you look at our proposed plan growth area. There's a gap in the, in the area between Walmart and the Prince Chopper, um, which the, that area right now, where the cursor is. Um, in working with the town, we've gotten this part of their planning is, we will likely in our final submission kind of close that gap and make that plan growth area. So just want to highlight that.
Um, it's show, I'm sorry, showing here is a little conservation.
There's something like.
There is, there's, there's, we saw a map wetland, so we'll be looking at how to, of that, but in that, in that there, there will likely be a bit of extension versus what's in the trap. So I just want to do that.
Okay, now the full circle moment.
In terms of.
Dogged out.
Well, just speaking to the, the planned growth area a little bit, um, it, it, there is a pretty substantial amount of local effort for planning. It's going to study right now for multi-use path connecting the city to that area in addition to, um, improving, or they currently, on a lot of my law, is the area is zoned for higher density uh, mixed-use and residential development. Um, and they're right now completing additional zoning amendments that would make it even more so.
And the T O D study.
Which is.
Yeah, it's part of the U D.
Which is the transition, four and development study funded by Chinmou. So they are participating in that study for this area. Um, and are just finalizing the master plan as part of that project and are beginning zoning updates.
Okay.
Okay. So.
You want to just take this to our.
We were standing on the front steps and Chip pointed out the hill, but we can barely see the top of, off in the distance. This is that hill. Um, fortunately, it is in St. Albans City. Um, lot of trails throughout. Uh, here is the ski hill, can't see the road till.
I am.
Um, AT hole disc golf course sprinkled in all the way around. Um, municipal pools, open year round, like a big white dome, something like that in the winter. Um, so that's the, kind of, the big.
That's. The city runs, but it's in the town.
Right.
Yeah.
Correct. Um, nice ski lodge, uh, dog park, um, open space, which is a really nice, nice spot. And let's see. For folks. I'm just gonna point out the high school on the map for.
I'll go a little bit to the bottom.
Go to your right, and then move down.
Right here.
There it is.
Here's BFA, uh, St. Albans High School, uh, Stanford Bellas Street Academy, folks that are interested. And we are touched in this building right here.
Okay. Thank you, Josh. That was a fun ride.
And maybe we can see it, there is a priority housing projects. We hear Congress made.
Yeah.
So I wrote a J O early on in my tenure for this, that gave us, uh, activity of devotion.
The housing is actually on the, on the back side.
All right, so any requests, or should I disconnect?
Well, there, I, I guess the only, there was a few noted areas that, um, we anticipate, we anticipate making changes on our next mission, like in, for example, in South Georgia, and there's a, a neighborhood where we're beginning to expand the village areas, area too, and in South Yarrow. Um, there was intent, you know, one parcel that the municipality owns and is planning for, didn't get fully included. So there's a few changes, I don't have that I was gonna sort of point out, but.
You, you can point them out when you submit the final.
If you point out the changes, that would be probably.
Okay. And, and I was gonna ask. Take up extra time necessarily right now to do that, it's not.
Yeah, yeah, we don't need to, but, um, I was gonna ask, are there any, um, proposed Tier 1B areas that are in municipalities that maybe don't quite meet the, the requirements yet, but plan to by the time we submit a final?
The, or what you're sitting in.
Yeah. Okay.
Jeff, because of the plan.
Let's say you plan this.
I don't know what you're talking about.
It'll be ready. It'll be done, it'll be ready.
Okay, just. Um, so we had.
I just told them about that.
Um, we have a break. Uh, we're, we're a little behind, but I think we should still take a break. Um. And people come back at uh. Uh, five oh five. Is that okay? Actually, Rich, I'm not anticipating that there's gonna be a lot. Um, we'll come back at five ten.
For those that are online, we're on a ten minute break, we'll come back in ten minutes at five ten.
Um.
Yeah.
We're missing two board members.
I think there's.
We have a core. We have a core. Here they are. I guess. Oh, yeah.
All right, so thank you, Josh, again for the virtual site visits. And thank you NRPC for the overview. And now I think we are going to have board members ask questions of the regional plan commission. Alex, Alphabetical, can you start with you?
Okay. So the housing targets, this is a question for our regional planner folks. The housing targets are ambitious, we all know that. And you've got 60% slotted for those by visit areas that have centers and plant growth areas. What's your, do you have a sense of whether they actually have the room, the capacity to absorb that 60% based on, you know, both the mapping and what you're seeing in those communities and over the last 10 years?
Well, I think there's a few. There's roughly, do they have capacity for it to like from a build out analysis standpoint, which we did complete roughly. But, you know, growth patterns. Then there's actually maybe that growth happened there.
Right, two different things. But no, no, I'm glad you answered that one. So you, what I wasn't getting early on was that you did do a build out analysis.
We did. Brought.
It's not just the targets and saying, well, these should be where 60% goes. You're just throwing them there. Do you actually have a sense based on zoning and the land area?
Roughly based on understanding that all of these communities need to have about five units per acre.
Gotcha.
Five residential units per acre. And so looking at that and then subtracting existing development. I mean, these communities don't have a level of data that we can easily do a, you know, a detailed and comprehensive build out analysis. But so we just roughly.
Yeah.
Put together.
And did your rough take into consideration infrastructure capacity?
All the.
Water and sewer infrastructure capacity?
Just generally that it was available.
Okay, not, not a like a detailed analysis.
No, especially when you're looking at 2050.
Right.
You know, the assumption is that.
You're gonna.
You need it, you're gonna be fixed.
You're gonna go more.
Yeah. Concerned about infrastructure and as well as growth patterns was one of the reasons we tested the 2030 numbers. And we're not going to fix infrastructure, we're not going to completely change the growth patterns by 2030.
Right.
So there's an adjustment there.
Gotcha, yeah, that makes sense. I, just a note, less of a question, that several of the more rural village centers with surrounding village areas seem to have village areas that captured undeveloped land so that they could grow. So like, good, good for you for doing that. Like, that, that seems like a very progressive way to work with communities to say, you know, we, we need to, we need to grow, you need to grow, there needs to be place for you to grow. So that was encouraging, I thought that was good. I guess, Greta, you mentioned a couple of concerns that community members brought up during your outreach. You mentioned, you know, not enough infrastructure to support the growth that is to happen. Concerns about changing the character of the community with that growth. Where do you feel like you got the most pushback from municipal governments? With.
I mean, it's time to prep, but I feel like I highlighted some of the negative comments more. So I feel like overwhelmingly, the communities were supportive and excited about the opportunities that this regional plan land use mapping was going to enable for them through the tier one V and state designations. So I guess I just want to say that I feel like there was definitely more positive feedback. And beyond that, I think that, I think it was a lot of, it was a concern over changing character of their communities through additional housing development and municipal services, facilities and capacity to accommodate. I think was the concern.
And I think the strongest category of comments that we got from municipal officials, the planning commissions and selectors is why didn't you draw the growth area bigger? And why is that transition versus plant growth area? Like, why, why couldn't you make that plant growth area? And a real interest in expanding the growth areas larger.
Actually had that question in St. Albans Town. We were looking at the Walmart site just to the north of that. The furniture place or?
There's a bunch of different things.
Yeah, but it looks like it, it's in transition, it's in orange, as opposed to plant growth. And I was wondering, well, why not? Is there a sewer, like, stop, was sewer stopped there or something?
Yeah, the main reason why that's transition versus plant growth area is that there are no complete streets connections really available or planned.
Yeah.
For that area.
Gotcha.
So that was the name.
The multi-use that's being planned basically ends up at Walmart.
And that's the same with the Swanton area where we were standing on site visit today. If you were traveling east toward Highgate, there's areas of development there before the airport and it's where the high school is. And that's shown as transition. And the primary reasons there were partially local zoning. But when you cross the interstate, it's really the complete streets access and why that was transitioned. And certainly Swanton would have preferred that to be plant growth area rather than transition. And the same with that area that you mentioned, which you call it St. Albans, but it's also partially part of Swanton.
Oh, okay. I might have more later, but next.
Brooke, Alphabetical, got any questions for the?
I have been very involved in the appeals study and I have to admit that I have not been able to dive into the regional plan yet. Monday, we're hoping to get that reported. So I will be much better prepared. But I would like to ask just a general question because early on in our tenure, when, when the regional plan and the towns were embracing this work, I heard some concerns expressed that this felt like a top down for the regional planning commission. I have gotten to know you, Catherine, a little bit through this process. And I am very impressed with your ability to communicate and to include viewpoints and focus and considerations. So I was wondering if you could just talk generally. I understood the information you provided about, you know, the engagement and all of those opportunities that you created. Do you feel comfortable with a collaborative effort here? That this has been an inclusive process where folks have really been listened to? And those suggestions and concerns have been incorporated in your process of planning?
I do feel comfortable that it has been a collaborative process. And I think if you, and I'll say that for a couple of reasons. One is through our outreach, we reached people that never would have been engaged with us if we didn't go to them. So, you know, parking at a convenience store in Albert on a Saturday morning or being at the Swanton library on a Sunday night. You know, we captured folks who would never come to a meeting, who wouldn't go online, do a survey, who wouldn't be engaged otherwise. And so, and those comments mattered. You know, we did make some adjustments to our plan and respond to those comments. And then we, through the online map, we also got comments that people posted, which we considered and used to, to respond and responded to and made some potential adjustments to the map. And if you look at the, the future land use mapping and evolution of those maps, we started with maps that were based on statute, the mapping guidance that the regional planning commissions collaborated on and our municipal plans. And so we started with municipalities' ideas as the basis of our maps. And then they evolved and you can see the evolution of, you know, looked at the mouse. We have like, you know, Highgate one, Highgate two, Highgate three, Highgate four. And those evolved based on the collaboration we have with the planning commissions with the selectors and the public comment that we got.
Right, I'm thrilled to hear that. And I am very impressed with the presentation. I love this area of Vermont, I'm familiar with it to a significant extent. And I'm thrilled at the work that I've seen here. But as I say, I need to do more homework and really get into the minutia of it, which I will be working on next week. And I'll have, I'll be other questions later in the process. So thank you for all of your work, it's really well presented. And everyone seems so well informed and responsive to the questions that we've had. So your whole team, I'm really thrilled. Kudos for all the work that you've done.
Thanks, Brooke. Kirsten, do you have some particular questions?
I do. I'm understanding from Alex's question, there are some, you know, unknowns about capacity of existing municipal systems. But I'm, beyond that, I'm also interested to understand how the mapping of the service areas was completed. And, you know, it was worked on to, you know, gather information about infrastructure expansion plans. You know, how, how, how was that? You know? How was that mapped out as far as existing infrastructure? What's the reliability of it? What do we know about where expansions are planned? And in terms of the area of land covered in a, you know, in a sewer district area? If a line was just like in front of the parcel, the whole parcels included, could you just talk a little bit about those things?
Yeah, I mean, we have, a lot of our communities have, we don't have necessarily mapped sewer districts. And so we're working with line features and, you know, sewer ordinances that are not, you know, super clear in terms of what areas were considered. So we're, we're using our, we used as part of methodology a standard of, I believe, like a thousand feet from sewer line is a general understanding that this is the general area that could have potential access to a municipal sewer. I think as we just noted, we, you know, if additional housing in village or plant growth areas were to be built, you know, looking towards 2050, that would necessitate potential sewer expansions if there was a lack of capacity. So we did not really look to incorporate, you know, detailed capacity analysis in, in this. So, I mean, we mapped sewer lines, we generally included that in our, we did a zoning, excuse me, a GIS overlay analysis with all of the different features and criteria that are required for plant growth area and for village areas. To, you know, using the methodology. And, you know, that resulted in the boundaries that we came up with, with fine tuning.
Are there specific known, like, capital projects that are being planned that would, that were considered as part of mapping out those service areas? Or we've considered in our mapping?
No. So that's something I think that's more particular to tier one A communities. Is there something particular?
No, I'm just trying to get the landscape of how that was mapped out and based on. Yeah. Because I think, you know, some of the tier one Bs with bigger multi-unit projects and some of those systems that have unknown capacity is just interested to know.
I mean, we definitely used the water and sewer analysis for our, the by plant growth area specifically, right? Like, it was not a consideration for the village area. But, you know, I think it was just not going to that level of detail in terms of analyzing that the current capacity of those systems was not something that was after days of the mapping and.
And also, you know, capacity and constraint issues are not an immovable barrier.
Right, right.
So, you know, we're planning for eight year, we're planning for long-term horizon. So unless, even if a municipality had some current capacity constraints, I don't think it would make sense for us to use that as a reason to draw, to map a smaller area because constraints can be addressed through expansion, through additional capacity. So especially with new programs available to state, there's even more opportunity for that.
Yeah. So the. Yeah, so the other, the other thing I, and I, I'm a little bit like Brooke in that I'm actually still like getting my head around all of it. So I have a feeling the information is, is here and, but maybe you could just help give me the lay of the land in terms of the status of like zoning and subdivision bylaws. Are there some that are pending? And then the opt-in information, like, I know it's, some of this is in progress. But I would anticipate that by the time the application is filed, those things will be fixed. And the final application will represent, you know, that information. So.
I mean, we, we have 17 tier one B eligible areas. And all of those eligible areas are municipalities that have zoning and subdivision bylaws. And so I think as I noted, there's two municipalities that have chosen at this time not to opt in. And then there's three that are still just not made that decision yet. And so of the 12 that have, all have zoning and subdivision bylaws. And of the three that are still considering, they also have zoning and subdivision bylaws. So that's not the right limiting factor.
Or limiting, yeah.
May I ask a clarifying question on that front? So the list that you have with tier one B communities includes those five that are possibles?
Three that are possible.
Okay, so the two that have opted out are now on the list, but the three that haven't decided yet are on the list.
The two that have chosen not to opt in at this time are. We've been asking our towns not to decide not to, but just to take no action. So they have chosen to take no action to opt in this time are still on the list for your consideration. And it would be helpful to us to hear in your comments, your, your thoughts on their eligibility. Because we're not somebody to, until March, they could change their minds between now and then. And so we don't want to, we want to, it would be good to get a sense from you. They are included in our tier one B information, so you have it for all 17 eligible ones.
Which are?
Fletcher and.
I'm sorry, I said Fletcher.
Fletcher and Fairfield. The chart that has the opt-in information, I think the green house symbol represents those undecided towns.
Yeah.
I think?
Yeah.
Maybe I, maybe my eyes are weary, but I, I think I only saw two greens.
But I think one of them was offering.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's Fairfax.
It's Fairfax.
Yeah, they were in. Yeah, so it was in the sub.
There are three, it's the two in Fairfax and Franklin.
Okay. Fairfax is a two separate area, the South Village in the. Okay, thanks.
And Richford is also still, you know. So there's three municipalities. Yeah. And of the three that are not currently tier one B eligible, we don't expect any of them becoming tier one B eligible. They're not, one of them has no subdivision regulations and it's not considering them at this time. The other two do not have zoning or subdivision and are not considering that at this time.
Okay, thank you. Which two, or which three were those?
That would be Montgomery, which doesn't have subdivision. And then Alberg and Isle Lot, that don't have zoning anymore.
Okay.
All of which are one acre towns.
Yeah.
Stare, do you have?
You're skipping over Jay, are you? Do yourself first or?
No, let's go to you first.
Full disclosure, I'm your Franklin County rep on the boards, so I'm very familiar. And I was an NRPC commissioner. So just to disclose, I don't perceive conflict of interest, it's arms length for the six months. I have not had a role in development of this plan. So I am familiar with it though, because I've read it before. I think we're, a lot of my questions were, as we got through some of the individual site visits that I sat here today, there's a lot of smaller areas of a lot of smaller villages. And in trying to sort of sort out how some of these areas became village centers versus hamlets, I think it was helpful for me. And so I think some of the questions I have, have been answered, but I just want to go through it and sort of clarify. I think what I heard was, so the back to methodology for how to determine these areas with like our village centers, for instance, with the mapping process, if it's a legacy center, if there's a historic element, and also you're taking a look at their local zoning and there. And so I think that last piece is perhaps what sort of pushed some over from a hamlet into a village center. Because some of those are a little bit more aggressive and looking at the smaller, as we're zooming in and zooming out, there are some very small village centers. But I think that's the sort of key element that I heard in terms of the design factor was that consultation with the municipality. I'm seeing head nods, so.
Yes, yes.
Fantastic. And then I think there were some other planning areas that throughout the county, a lot of differences. So for instance, the planned growth area in Richford incorporates, I think, blue seal deeds as well as farm on the edges. St. Albans Town is a larger plant growth area as well. And so it sounds like these were done also in consultation with municipalities in terms of.
Yeah, in some of those cases, those boundary edges were based on whether that area was planned for higher density mixed use development globally.
And that also got to the push-pull of the needing to make sure we have enough land for the housing targets. It should be your other question.
Absolutely.
So you expanded some of them to, to make more.
In most cases, they already met. In, in, in most cases, like, the rough data analysis we completed didn't dictate a need to expand, although it was part of the conversation when we were looking at all of the other criteria together.
And I think looking at the mapping process, the village centers themselves very much follow some of the legacy centers are very tight. They aren't too expansive, they're, I think, in looking at the different regional differences, these have been very tight. It's the village areas and plant growth areas around those that have tended to grow. I very much appreciated you doing calculation about some of these areas and how much they grew, which, kudos, I haven't seen another regional entity do that. I very much appreciate that. I think that was very helpful to look at in terms of percentages. And I just would say, I'd like to see other regions do analysis like that.
Okay, thanks, Stare. Like Brooke, I have been really immersed in trying to get the response to the Rutland region. So I have looked at the plan, I have sort of skimmed it, but I have not yet read it cover to cover, so to speak. So I, I appreciate the map because it, it shows cohesive planning areas. It doesn't have a lot of small polygons that don't have meaningful planning value in, in my view. So I think, I think you've done a great job on the map. There, there are some data omissions just that we need to figure out, I think. The water, the bodies of water don't appear in the map. They're voided space, I think, for the.
Well, like, I cut the, I cut the lake out of the map because it's a multi-use map. So I didn't think it made sense to show.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think we got to put them back in.
Well, I think there are islands that are belonging to towns, so.
The island should all be.
I think the islands are on that.
Yeah.
The lake itself is clipped out of the land use map. If you want the whole lake as rural consideration.
I mean, maybe not Lake Champlain, but the land, the landlocked lakes, so to speak, and the rivers, I think, should be incorporated, you know, into the map. And then we talked a little bit about the, the, the road right of ways being mapped as, as rural general rather than. Most of them are passing through large areas of rural agriculture and forestry. And I wonder, I don't know how difficult it will be to, to, you know, to just, if that's the case, then just make it rural ag forestry instead of the little string of rural general. What does the, what does the methodology say about that, if anything?
I think it addresses.
Okay. But in general, I mean, at the, if you zoom and look at the whole region, I think that's a, that's a nice future land use map that says, you know, it's, it has meaningful planning areas. So I think it's well done. Can you talk a little bit about the equity analysis that you performed? Because I think you did a good job of it. And I think it would be edifying for, for future applications that come to us to hear about it. But you're looking at Emily, Emily, did you do that? So I think you did a good job with it, Emily. And if you could just give an overview of it, I think that would be helpful to others.
Sure, yeah, so we, we first build off some of the work that.
Sure, yeah. So we first built off some of the work that the county planning commission had done to start to, and then built off there from our own of looking through the actual definition of environmental benefits and burdens, the statute gives a number of different items. And went through and did an analysis of which ones we thought would be most likely to be affected by regional land and planning decisions. So some of them aren't really directly tied to the sort of decision-making that this plan has. And then from the ones that we thought would have some level of impact, we then went through and tried to identify actual mapping data that we could use. We don't have exact numbers, but I think for like seventeen or so of them, for a little over half, we were able to have some sort of mapping data. And then there was a number that we felt were important, but we couldn't really map on any meaningful way, like access to healthy food. That type of data doesn't exist on that scale. We then mapped the areas that the statute defines as environmental justice focused populations, which has to do with the percentage of the population that is speaking English less than fluently, so folks that speak other languages. The percentage of those that are Black Indigenous or people of color, which for the census, we use census all other than non-white, all other than white only. And then the third one had to do with income, I can't remember the exact criteria. We had to make a small adjustment on the the race statistic because for our region, if we use the state definition, basically every community in our region except for, I think, one would be considered an environmental justice focused population, which I think is just reflective of more diversity in Vermont as a whole, especially in the sort of more western section of the state. So we changed that number to be more reflective of where there was, we changed it to ten percent, I think, so a greater number there. And then we did an analysis of whether or not those areas were disproportionately burdened according to the data that we had. And there, when we found disproportionate burden, we looked through all of the policies of our plan to try to figure out if our policies adequately addressed those needs, knowing that, you know, we only have control over so much, but to the extent that we have control or impact in some ways. Knowing that there are, you know, we knew that there probably are existing, a lot of times our map is mapping existing sort of burdens, but we want to make sure those burdens don't get worse through our future planning. And so we then identified that we needed to strengthen our goals and policies. And eventually came up with a list of goals and policies that we felt like would prevent any existing burdens that might exist from getting worse. So that was our sort of approach to it. It's certainly something that's, the data that we have available to us is not great, but we're doing our best that we can to sort of focus on the policy aspects of it, which I think are really the most important part.
Yeah. I appreciated the approach that you took and the map. And I would just say, you know, keep apprised of what's happening on the state level in terms of mapping and the A and R civil rights and EJ group is working with, I think, Stone Environmental is who they hired, I think. And they're working with a community engagement outfit, I can't think of the right word, consultant as well to get mapping that's more meaningful rather than the census block mapping, those percentages of.
Yeah.
Yeah, so something that's more meaningful for Vermont. So the next time you do this, I think it'll be more meaningful analysis, and I think the approach that you took is, is good, so.
I have more questions, but I don't want to.
Let's go down.
Well, no, we do want to have time for state agencies.
We could do that now, and then if there's still.
Yes, but I was thinking, then we could do state partners and agencies.
Yeah, let's do so. So Jen, do you want to tell you where we are with state agency comments? Well, no, let's ask if Jen has any comments now.
Well, she's, they asked for an extension, which isn't.
Well, she's on there. So you're muted, Jen. Or we can't hear you. I don't see the mute, but can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can't hear you.
I don't have any comments, so thank you.
We should test to see if anyone is, can hear.
So.
Is the mic on or not?
Hold on, let's turn the volumes up on these.
Really weird, hold on. Can you hear me now?
Is the audio selected to the candle? Let's see if Annette can speak. Annette, can you unmute yourself and see if we can hear you?
Yeah, I don't have teams, but is it something in teams?
This is Annette. Can you hear me?
Oh, okay, so I don't, Annette just unmuted.
It's assignment to speaker.
I can hear Annette.
I'm going to try.
I can hear each other, so it's on her. Okay, so it is on our end.
It's okay, I'm all set, thank you.
Speaker is Kando. Is the Kando volume turned up? Want to just try that?
This is Annette. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you say something? I don't, I can't hear her, but it registered when you were talking.
Quick over to that, that would be the laptop.
Yeah, try again.
Okay, that's unfortunate.
Right now.
Thing is, it's off. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you, Annette.
Okay, yeah.
I don't think they can hear us.
Yeah, well, I did notice that my microphone was showing that it was whited out for a second there.
Yeah, it was disabled.
I think every meeting I've been in lately has had some major technical issues in the room.
Yeah.
Oh, which is very funny. Let me just, let me just bring you in on the joke. I am the least skilled in technology focused interview, not just the Lord.
Right.
Very miracle work.
They're giving you the floor.
Yeah, I apologize, Jen Mojo, with the Agency of Natural Resources, and that was a lot of work for me to chime in and say I don't have any comments at this time, but I really appreciate the opportunity to listen in and hear more about the work that's gone into the plan and the mapping process. So thank you, and I'm glad we figured out the tech issue.
Okay, thanks, Jen. Annette, how about you? Do you have any comments on the Northwest Regional Plan?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Okay, anybody in the room have any comments on the plan? Or anything they want to say about anything?
Well. So, can I just add some information?
Sure.
So the agency, as Jen knows, the Agency of Natural Resources asked for and received a 10-day extension to submit written comments. So that will be forthcoming. We have already received comments from Agency of Transportation, Vermont Emergency Management, and Department of Public Service. And I learned today that DHCD submitted comments but had inadvertently evidently forgotten to send them to us. So Catherine has just now forwarded them, and we'll get those up on the database as well. So that's the status of state agency comments. I would also note that VNRC requested an extension to submit their comments, which they anticipate submitting on Monday. So that will be forthcoming as well.
Okay, great.
So that's the roundup of where we are with that.
Can I ask for a process question about state agency and public comment? If, as I've looked at some of the state agency comments to date, and some of it is inaccurate. So do you want any feedback from us on the state comments, or you're just going to take them and? They're just part of the record, and they, we're tasked with bringing them together for you, basically. And you, just as you will with our comments, you will take them into consideration and respond accordingly.
Well, we're going to take your comments and give that due consideration.
Okay, we get substantial difference, substantial difference. Everybody else gets due. Protection, yes, got it, got it.
I would just say on my end, I mean, we won't be receiving A and R comments for, yeah, A and R comments for up to 10 days. I mean, if there's something that you want to say in response, that you're welcome to do that. Like, that's fine. It's not a, I don't think it's a requirement, if it's something you want to point out.
Yeah, I mean, it's up to you.
Well, let me give you an example of my, related to my question, and maybe that will help answer, so.
Okay.
The memo that you don't have yet.
The DHCD.
Yes, yes, talks about, I think, six of our communities not meeting tier one B requirements. Their information was incorrect, so they do. It also highlights a couple of areas that they say don't have access to water and sewer, but they do. So it's those sorts of, I just don't know if you, if you're interested in that, that level of response back or not.
So you can. I mean, when you come back to us, if you feel that it's important to point that out to us, you can. You know, if, yeah. You know, because BHCD is an important partner here because of this CIV, the Trinity Investment Program. So you know, you can also, maybe they, maybe they will show up at your your adopt, your public hearings when you're going through the adoption process and you can speak to them directly. They seem to think that their statutory call is to speak to you directly rather than for us to, to hand you their comments, so.
So just as a point of clarifying, though, within the timeframe, which is, when is the 10-day deadline that you're granting the extension to?
10 days from yesterday, so.
Okay, so 10 days from yesterday, NRPC could also submit comments to the board addressing other comments?
I think so. That's what you were saying?
I think so. That's just my own.
Yeah.
That might be helpful just in terms of memorializing some of the disgraced.
I'm also learning that maybe DHCD sending you the comments and not us was maybe intentional.
No, or, well, maybe. Yeah, they, they didn't directly send us the comments last time. It was a link in an agenda, the, for the CIV that had a link to their comments.
Interesting.
Yeah. So, on the Rutland.
Right.
So Catherine, you got your answer, right? Can we move on?
Sure.
Okay, good.
Clear.
Can I ask more questions?
Yeah.
Okay, so I want to get there before time runs out. So, and not all these are of great importance, but I, you know, was thinking as we were talking. So first, you highlighted the wages and the differential between Franklin and Franklin County and Grand Isle, and that just made my brain flip because I'm like, it's the other way around, isn't it? And it is for household income, right? So there's difference, what you're highlighting is wages versus household.
Wages.
Because household incomes are much higher in Grand Isle County than they are in Franklin County, right?
Yes, it is, well, versus wages, it's really right comes down to.
Okay. And what, what have you heard? What do you think is happening with regard to the school enrollment trajectories in the county? And the potential for school closures, you know, it seems like a really mixed picture.
It's very uneven.
With, with, you know, communities like South Hero just sort of tanking and, and, you know, communities like Fairfax, you know, growing. So, did you have conversations, I guess is my question, with the communities that you're working with about this issue?
And I think, you know, when we were talking about the housing targets in particular, the school question would be discussed differently depending upon whether you were in one of those communities like Fairfax who just did an expansion and is already almost out of room, or you're in a community like South Hero who'd be thrilled to have more students in their school. So there's definitely an interest in keeping our schools open and vibrant and growing. And if you remember also with that, you see like certain communities are really growing and others are not. And with household size decreasing, those communities that aren't growing are experiencing a loss of students in the school. And it is a real concern about potential loss of that community core.
Yeah, I'm thinking particularly of the northern tier communities in Franklin County and what's, I mean, are they, are are they all losing their schools?
No, no.
Richford, Brookshire, you don't think so?
No.
Okay.
So there is a state study that's, just to recognize that, that's looking at all of this right now. I think.
Yeah, the districting, yeah.
Correct, yeah.
I can highlight that. That is one of the reasons that with our 2050 housing targets, we, amongst our planned growth areas, we did not wait towards planned growth areas that are experiencing higher growth currently. We wanted to see that growth spread out so that Ennisburg and Ritzford would also be growing like Fairfax, like St. Albans, like to an excess one. So that's, you know, I think, in that assumption is that we want the eastern half of our Franklin County shore to.
Great, it's a big issue that I hear about, and so I read it in that education section of the plan, but it didn't really seem to flesh out the somewhat dire conversation that's happening across the state right now. But that's because you did that a couple of years back, and, you know, the conversation has evolved since 2020.
Conversation has definitely evolved. It continues to evolve, almost daily, I think.
So another question on the mapping. Not a lot of resource-based recreation, future land use areas, and yet your two counties are Lake Champlain. Or at least portions of them are Lake Champlain. Why not have more of that particular future land use type along the lake or along Lake Carmine, for example?
Well, it is along Lake Carmine, who cares?
Little bit, little bit.
Yeah, and there are pockets along the lake shore that are, that are resource-based recreation, but, you know, we're the only region in the city that doesn't have a ski area or a residential college. So we're unique in that respect, but, so we don't have the ski area as a driver for the resource-based recreation, but we do have the lake. The way the resource-based recreation, future land use area is described in statute really refers to a mix of uses, of, you know, a mixed-use area.
Not just residential.
Not just residential, and most of the lake shore is residential.
That makes a lot of sense.
There's a lot of individual recreation happening, but, but there's not like a.
No, I, you're, you're going to, you're going to hear about, for me, about Rutland because it's the last plan that we, the first plan that we worked on. In their example, they have several inland lakes like Lake Bomsey completely mapped as resource-based recreation. And so that stuck in my mind, and I thought when I was looking at Northwest, I was probably going to see more of that, but I didn't.
Yeah, and even like Lake Bomsey, there are some commercial uses, there are some places of uses around Bomsey. We don't, our, our lake shores and our lakes don't tend to be a mix of uses. We haven't got that.
It's mostly residential.
We did use this opportunity to do some mapping around our shorelines to really try to hone in on areas that might have like an anchor commercial use, that's, that, like, that shoreline development might be, sort of exists because of, or sort of have that relationship between the residential shoreline development and an adjacent commercial use of, or resort or something along that line. And that led to areas in Grand Isle, Tyler Place, and then the lake in Franklin, Isle and South Hero.
Yeah.
Lake Carmine. And so anyway, like that analysis happened, but I think as Catherine noted, like, we just, a lot of our lake shore areas are, you know, purely residential and not, and individually so, they're not like connect, like they're, you know, it's like one, you know, single-family home on a lake that's not connected, like in
Yeah.
any different way or in a, yeah.
And honestly, I'm not convinced what the value is in that particular designation. I'm not sure like what it, what it confers. I think it makes sense for certain ski areas, but along the lake shore.
Along that point is we really kind of, we try to think about what's the policy impact on having something we designated resource-based recreation? Are we going to have specific policies in our plan that are going to be directed to that land area in a different way? And so that also went into driving why we would jeopardize something that way.
Can I just follow up on this? Because when we were out in St. Albans Town near the marina and the park, and we were at the park, you, could you just explain that now that we're in the meeting? Because I thought it was an important point as to why that was not designated as the recreational.
as to why that was not designated as the recreational resource area.
So the reason why that particular area was included in their village center or village area.
Village center.
So it is, it is already part of the designated legacy village center, the St. Albans Bay Park. I think it is likely we would have included it if they don't have, if they didn't have a designation already. And that is because that particular park functions very much the same way like Taylor Park does here. It's not in a traditional downtown as you think about, like a fully built up downtown, but it functions in the same way as that people utilize it to have their creamies or to take a walk or to take in nature while they're in the village. So it functions as a cohesive part of the village rather than a standable park that you go to just because you're going to.
Thank you, because that has been my experience there. So it made a lot of sense when you explained that. So I appreciate it.
So last point, just because Janet has heart done it a little bit, and it made me look a little deeper. This issue about the rural general roads being assigned to rural general and having these little yellow lines that, you know, snake through what is mostly rural ag forest. It's only an issue in three of your communities. So there's a mapping, there's some sort of mapping issue going. It's just Highgate, Swanton, and Georgia where that's the case. All the communities on your future land use map don't map roads as rural general. They map as the surrounding land type. So there's, it, it's, it seems like it's more than a, a policy decision.
It was definitely not a policy decision.
The function of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure it's easily corrected.
There's, oh, it's, yeah, we are, I already did. Yeah, I did. All right. Do we have any more comments from anybody in the room? Okay. Maybe we can get home to dinner early. Any more board discussions we have? Board members? No?
We'll get you our comments.
Yeah.
We look forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you for hosting us, Chip.
Yeah, thank you.
Do we need a motion to adjourn?
Uh, yeah, I guess.
Meeting, yes, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.